Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to tonight's school board meeting. We will start the evening with the pledge of allegiance. Jason, will you lead us in the pledge, please?
Thank you.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for joining us tonight. Our first item is approval of the agenda, and I have one change. Actually, I have two changes. Under new business, item F, revision to the athletics and activities handbook, we are going to table that until our June 11th meeting. And we are going to recess this meeting after G, discussion items, and we'll have the rec board meeting then, and then we'll come back into session so the board can work on their self-evaluation. Does anyone else have any changes? May I approve?
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve the amended agenda. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carried. Recognitions. Mr. Bartlett.
Okay, now, as I was telling my friends to my right here, I wasn't at the last board meeting. I was at a concert, so I apologize in advance, but I also have a lot of people to recognize. So, back from Teacher Appreciation Week, Dusty and Amanda Finley and Jared and Haley Hansen brought in some treats for the middle school staff, so we appreciated that. I would give them a shout out. I've told you guys before, but Mrs. Burling's sixth grade reading class Greek plays are always awesome, and they were awesome again this year, so I would give the students and Mrs. Burling and all the people that helped her a shout out. Mrs. Munger's seventh grade social studies class had to pivot a little bit for Colonial Day this year, just because the May calendar was pretty incredibly full, but the students did a great job. Mrs. Munger did a great job. We still got to have a lot of families in the building, even if it was in the middle of the day on a Wednesday. We had a good turnout, so shout out to those guys. Still recognizing Mr. Whipple and his band and choir students for those concerts that were so good back on the 12th and 13th. Then on the 14th, would recognize Mrs. McCormick and Dr. Colgrove for organizing a really successful men in STEM Day here at the middle school. I would give special recognition to our guest speakers, Mike Evenson, Seth Rhodes, Dave Morrell, Jonathan Sloan, Jake Harris, Dave Sudbrink, Scott Johnson, Robert Munger, and Ryan Whipple. They did a really good job. The kids really enjoyed it. It was really a beneficial day for us. Shout out to some seventh grade boys, Tanner Leonardson, Braxton Von I, Callan Smith, and Brayton Von I helped us unload the Totes of Hope shipment. A couple pallets get to put away real quick when you have good help, so we appreciate them. Our sixth and seventh grade boys' track team were district champs. We had two new school records in track and field, so Weston McConkey now owns the 200-meter school record, and Matty Deerfield broke the long jump record that has belonged to a young lady by the name of Deb Silty since 1973. So shout out to those student athletes. Thank you to Scott and Kathy Beeler for organizing the eighth grade triathlon and everything that goes with that. We had to reschedule it a couple times, but our winners were Dylan Hesby and Kaia Peterson. And then also, I would recognize Kathy Beeler and Nate Smith for the eighth grade Outlaw Ranch experience that went really smooth, and we actually had the one day of sunshine in May, so that was really nice. And then about half of those things, if they, well, all those things that happened in the auditorium, special thank you to Sally Hoover, who does all that stuff, and her May calendar is very, very full, so we appreciate her as well, and I am done. Thank you.
Thank you, and thanks to everybody. Anyone else have recognitions? Adam?
Mine's not nearly like that. The, and I don't know if it's FBLA, FFA, which of the F groups planted the flowers. It was through Morgan. They did a nice job planting the flowers in front of the high school. Sophie Tiedemann planted the ones at the elementary school. They looked very nice. And then we got Aspen Bloomback, and Julie Morris are going to be our summer help, so thank you to them. That's all I got. Tyler just informed me, FFA, so thank them guys for planting flowers.
That's awesome. I was not aware that they did that. I thought you guys did that.
We did last week, this year, in Friday. I should know the lady's name. I still needed the flowers.
Bernie?
Oh, Bernie Cherry. Yes, thank you, Bernie. Awesome. Anyone else have recognitions? I would just like to thank everyone who was involved in graduation. I thought it was an awesome day and yeah, really proud of everybody, mostly our grads and the people who got them there, so that's awesome. Jason?
It was something different this year with Colonial Days. I like the way we did that. That was different, but I liked it. It seemed like it flowed pretty, you didn't have kids really all over too much. Parents kind of moved around, so for what it's worth, I liked, I liked that setup, so.
Any other recognitions? All right then, visitors' comments? Would you come up and use the microphone for us, Dee?
Pretty loud as it is. Dee Dee Stumpf at the car show this summer. Sandy apologizes, she wasn't feeling well, so she is not here to be with us tonight. I just wanted to clarify a few things. I've come to the knowledge that there's some misnomers out there as to our rates that we're charging and stuff like that for our participants. It has come to light that you guys run under the assumption that each participant was being charged $1,000. That is incorrect. It's only $50 for drag races, $50 for autocross, stuff like that. So I just wanted to clarify that for you guys so that you understood the kind of fees that we're charging. We're doing, excuse me, borderline fees this year. Starting out first year, you always kind of want to go mild to start out to, for your introductory year, and then your fee schedule changes, the more you get, the larger you get. So I just wanted to kind of clarify that. So we have ran into a little bit of a glitch. We had about between 300, 350 registered last week. Douglas Car Show has put all their information out for their drag races, and it's the same weekend, same day. So now we're losing a whole bunch of participants because they're fourth year, fifth year, so they're established. So we are possibly looking at the possibility of swapping the days for the autocross and the drag races, and I just didn't know if you guys had any other events going on that weekend here, and just putting it out there in case. We have to get prior approval from the state first before we even do that, but I wanted to put that out there to see if you guys had any other events going on to where we would possibly be able to do the autocross on Saturday instead of Friday.
I believe we, the only thing we needed was access through the middle school parking lot in the back.
Yep.
And that was all we had going on.
Right.
And I was, I never heard that $1,000. I-
Okay. Well, that, that has just been something in some discussions that, that we had come across and had been told and stuff like that, so you know, being first year starting out, we don't have any money, you know, in the coffers to start with other than our own private money that we've put into it to start to get our insurance, to get our websites and stuff like that. You know, we're hoping to, to, between sponsorships from advertising, sponsorships from local vendors and stuff like that that want to sponsor, and then registrations and stuff like that is what will make the whole thing run. So I just wanted to let you know that that's where we're at with our-
The only thing I would say about the dates is we have student groups looking at selling things for their fundraisers, so we would need to know as soon as possible.
Well, there'll still be, there'll still be activities on Fridays and Sa- Friday and Saturday both. It's just what events will be held what day is kind of in question now, just because all those 300 or 200 racers or whatever that, that are going to go to Douglas, they said that they would come to us on Friday if we could, if we could switch our days. So they'd come to us on Friday and then go down there on Saturday, so we're in the attempts to try and switch it if we can, but we'd have to get prior approval from the state first.
And that's so you can use 16, right?
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Does anyone else have questions for Dee Dee?
Joe?
I just curious on what kind of numbers you're looking at for the autocross.
Most of them that, and it's kind of hard to tell right now, just because if, if we did get those 300 people back, obviously they're going to leave and go down there Saturday for the drag races in Douglas if we were to switch it, but there's people that are, they're going, there's people that are going to do separate registration for drags, separate registration for autocross. It's unknown. I mean, we have place settings enough for 500, and we know in the time span that we have that we can run 500 through. And that's, that's the cap. We won't run any more through than 500. So, but some people only come and do autocross, some people only come and do the car show, some people only come and do the drag races. So it's, it's hard to tell, you know, number-wise, until we get right down to it for the first year as to what kind of numbers we're going to have. So.
My only other question is-
Sure.
Your, your insurance will still cover-
Oh, yes. Insurance is covered for those two days. Yes. Mm-hmm. Yep. Absolutely. Absolutely.
Want to double check that. Anyone else have questions? Right. Jason?
You did say if we could switch that, they would basically come, come back up here for at least that day.
So, so they would do, they would do the drag races here on Friday, and then they'd go to Douglas for the drag races on Saturday, so we wouldn't necessarily get I mean, our numbers probably for the autocross would be a little bit smaller, just because they would leave and go do the drag races in, in Douglas. But, but I can't say that, you know, it wouldn't bring in, I mean, there might be people that just come in just for the autocross. And there's going to be people, be people that come in just for the car show. So, you know, I can't give you any firm numbers with it being the first year. We just don't have any idea. I mean, everything is unknown. I, all I can do is go off of some of the numbers that they had in Sturgis, and theirs was a whole five-day event, which it was three days worth of racing, and, and so you have, you know, they had 500 people a day, so they had upwards of 1,500 cars racing, you know, and then you're talking over 3,000 people, you know, if you multiply that by two. But being a three-day event compared to a one-day event, we just, you know, you just, you just can't, can't compare because you just don't know.
So, thank you, and, and just keep in touch. We'd appreciate-
So you guys would be okay flopping the days then?
Yeah, I don't think we were locked into any given day other than making sure we could
Have access, yeah.
Get in that access, so.
Wonderful. Well, we appreciate the cooperation, so. And, and feel free, Sandy and I are always, I'm always at Travel Center, find me out there anytime. Come on out, and if you ever have any questions, just give me a holler, and I'd be happy to answer any of the questions that you may have.
Okay.
So, all right?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Right. Any other visitors' comments? Oh, Jason?
Is that with the, with the potential less people, is that going to change the amount of staffing you're going to have for, for the events or anything? You'll still have K? All of them, K?
And-
And stuff like that. We don't, we don't plan on downsizing anything.
Do you guys have like a July 1 registration deadline, no matter what you're doing, or? Okay. Do you guys have like a July 1 registration deadline, no matter what you're doing, or? Okay, that's what I thought. All right.
The only thing that'll cut us off is if we get to that 500 cap.
Okay, so 500 is, yeah. All righty. Thank you. All right. Action items, the consent agenda. It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carried. We have no old business, so we'll go to new business, the 25, 26 extra duty list. Mr. Superintendent?
So, Madam Chair, in your packet is not a completed list, but it's a start. So I would make a recommendation for the approval of that list, knowing that there are still several vacancies that will need to be filled for the next school year.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the 2025, 26 extra duty list. Is there any discussion? My only thing is, do you think we're going to be able to fill all the slots that we need?
Oh, look at- So, I'm, I'm here, from my last training, I'm hopeful. However, there is going to become a time where either we're going to be short of student athletes, or we're going to be short of a coach for a year. My recommendation to the board is, is that you don't cut the program. You just simply don't offer it for that school year. You move on to see what the student interest is and what the staffing patterns could be down the road. It's going to happen. I just don't know when.
Yep. We'll keep our fingers crossed in Bartlett fashion.
Well, and you're adding officials, and you're adding guns, you're adding, you know, you're adding a lot of different variables that are going to make this thing very interesting in a very short period of time.
All right. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried. Certified resignation.
Madam Chair, I would make the recommendation to the board for the resignation of Crystal Stevens Benson as a special education case manager and permission to post.
Madam Chair, move to approve and express our deep regret that she's leaving us.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the certified resignation from Crystal Stevens Benson as special ed case manager and to post the position, and to accept that resignation with regret. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Any abstentions? All right. Motion carried. Revisions to policy IHBG relations with homeschooling.
Yes, so I would recommend that policy on those revisions towards those regulations with the homeschooling.
May I have a motion? It's been moved and seconded to approve the revisions to policy IHBG relations with homeschooling as demanded by the legislature. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carried. 25, 26 Middle School Handbook.
Madam Chair, I would recommend to the board that handbook with those revisions that are highlighted there in your packet.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the revisions, I'm sorry, approve the 25, 26 Middle School Handbook. Is there any discussion? Jason?
I guess with the previous- With the previous and, and the high school, I'd have to, I, and I apologize, I didn't have any, have it printed out to circle them, but there was, if we approve it, can we still go back and fix some, some wording, some grammar in that? Or does that need to be before we, because there's some things in there where it's, where it's like, whatever it was, it was was, but it shouldn't have been was. It was supposed to have been there or something like that. I, I'd have to go, I'd have to read through it again, and-
I, I would consider just a correction like that, just a friendly amendment that you're we're still accepting it as it, with its intense for-
And I'll try to get back in there and look and circle a couple of those that I seen, so.
Okay.
Knowing that one of the administrators is married to an English person, I'd be more than happy to point that out if you would just point them out to me first.
I'll use red pen, circle-
Please, thank you.
Billy?
So, when did we decide we're getting away from this funding, better funding for the lunch program? Is that this coming year?
We did that in the budget meeting.
Because it's still, school lunches available to all students for $3.
And that's still- That might be a late thing that we fix as we bring in our new staff and we figure out exactly how that, that, that one really could be a to-be-determined. I still think even though that we walk away from the lunch program, there's got to be a way that all kids do eat, what that price is and how we absorb that.
Lower.
Yeah, she's got a lot of money. We'll let her figure that out.
Yeah, I just didn't know. Maybe it could be lower. It could be 25 cents more or something. I don't want to be married to that $3 and-
Right.
So I would, I would suggest we do that. Yeah, this, this can be changed next meeting or in September or-
Yeah.
Yeah. And I, I take it sunglasses are have become a bit of an issue for students.
No, we're good. That, that's not an addition for mine. Mine, actually, we're dialing back worrying about hats first thing when they walk in the building. That's per staff request. We feel like as soon as somebody walks in the building, we have to say, Tyler, get your hat off, and we don't want to do that anymore. So we're just going to do it, kind of like cell phones, just 805, they'll all know, and that way we don't have to start a day off. That, that's my only change. And then otherwise, yeah, Billy's right. When the lunch prices change or something like that, that would be a revision that I would definitely go with.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion is carried. High School Student Handbook.
Again, Madam Chair, I would recommend that handbook for the 25, 26 school year, and again, with the earlier mentioned topics, there may be some changes that will come before the start of the school year. That will have to add those.
Move to approve?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the 25, 26 High School Student Handbook. Is there any discussion? So I have a couple questions, but I'm not sure who can answer. I assume, I, I want us to be really clear about the personal computer that, that's not confused with their school laptop, correct? That's what you're trying to say. There is a student-owned personal computer. Okay.
Because there is no need whatsoever for a personal device to be used on school grounds when they are provided with a very capable school machine, but I think we have, at the high school level, we had an issue or two where that was one way we wanted to circumvent all the different things that we do to monitor, keep them safe, make sure we're following federal law, all that stuff.
I just wanted to make-
Did I cover all that?
But I like Apple instead.
All right, and then my other question was, oh, what's the blanket issue?
I'm so glad he's not here. I'm going to infer what you asked about sunglasses. I, I would infer that apparently at some point, at least a couple students wanted to take blankets, you know, get cozy. I think he's probably, I think the staff is looking more towards a, you know, focused learning environment that doesn't involve blankets.
And no personal devices.
And no personal-
Yeah, okay.
I think one of the other issues that come up with this is, is it does allow the student to, to hide things that, that really aren't needed on school grounds. And so there's just a lot of issues that go along with that, including like when you have to evacuate, i.e. a fire drill. You know, you don't need a blanket on the stairs there that somebody else dropped, and then everyone else comes tumbling down after, so it just, if, if there's a health issue, we will deal with the health issue, but I don't think we need our blankies at that level.
Wonderful. Any other questions?
Can't make it up.
All right. Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried. All right. We are down to directors' reports. Beau, would you like to start?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Now that it's summertime, I kind of just wanted to give everyone a heads up on, on projects, so today we had Collins in working on doors where Pineco's going to come in tomorrow, and we're just working on our lockdown system, making sure all the doors are locked, all of them stay open, all the panic buttons work, the strobe lights work, so we'll be testing some, some lockdown stuff here probably next week. Also, probably our biggest part of the year, we're going to start, we already started today. We started imaging computers. The main thing with that this year is we are moving from Windows 10 to Windows 11. They no longer support Windows 10, so we, we held out as long as we could, but we're ready to make that change, and right now the image seems like it'll, it'll be good. It takes a lot, a lot, a lot less. I think we're about, instead of an hour on a machine, it's about 35 minutes, so that's really good, so. Next month, we will be swapping out audio enhancement servers. Essentially, all it is, is they don't support them anymore, so they're sending us some new ones, so those are the servers that control our clocks, our bells, our announcements, so it should be switching in, upgrading, and then we should be good. Dome Sound, the, the subwoofer finally came in, so they will be putting that in next Wednesday, and then tuning it and making it sound good, so we'll get that all fixed, so. Other than that, multi-factor, we're ready to roll on that. We won't probably push that out until everybody's back and we can get some training on it. Should be pretty easy, but we'll have the multi-factor ready to go, and then we also have our CrowdStrike, so our endpoint antivirus stuff ready to go, and that'll also go on servers, so. That's kind of the summer plans, if there's any questions.
No? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Adam?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't have much. We top dressed the football field. We'll top dress the practice field this week is the plan, depending on the weather, I guess. We're going to get all the gutters sealed district-wide here next month or so. Going to get a new roof, put on the big section of the middle school, I guess you would call it. They're going to start that about the 1st of July, hopefully get it done before the car show. Big section of the middle school, I guess you would call it, um, they're gonna start that about the first of July, hopefully get it done before the car show. Um, gonna put all new door seals and all the doors, the fuzzy strips in between them and the sweeps on the bottom. Try to stop some of the air leaks in the winter. Um, other than that, lots of little principal projects and um. That should be about it, big projects. Unless you have something else.
Beau?
No, you, you, it's, you don't have anything, you forgot something that you should know.
Okay, well, well, Billy has a question.
Um, just in case they're not done with that roof, we planned on just um. Pretty much ro- roping off the middle school parking lot, right, so.
So. If they're not a hundred percent sure they're gonna be done, they're not going to start, because I couldn't.
Okay.
They'll have to have, they'll have to have blue houses, they'll have to have dumpsters, they'll have to have a crane to get equipment up there.
Okay.
But maybe they could not be a hundred percent done. For sure by the fifteenth, wait till afterwards.
Okay.
Um, and I should know that in the next day or two what their plan is.
The new store, this is the one-stop shop. We have a pharmacy, we have a bootleggers liquor, the deli, the food that you can get at a lunchtime is so amazing, the coffee shop. Certain Friday mornings, there's thirty people sitting here in all these chairs, this is the hub for people to come and visit, have their coffee, have their doughnuts. It's amazing what this area has done, totally amazing.
Maybe if they could not be a hundred percent done. For sure by the fifteenth, wait till afterwards.
Okay.
Um, and I should know that in the next day or two what their plan is.
Because I know we talked about blocking that off, if they, if that access would help them, even if they're not done.
I'd be more worried about somebody just walking around, but clean equipment. It don't hurt them to wait a few days, if they need to.
Okay, any questions for Adam? Adam also attended a Buildings and Grounds Committee meeting tonight, and, and Billy will report on that in a minute. Beau, what did you have to add?
I'm sorry, I had my list, but this, actually, we just met on this today, so we are also in the process of working with Phoenix Learning to build. Um, the three, five standard base report cards, because they are going. Um, K through five with standard base report cards, so we are in the process of building that, and that will integrate with uh. With the power school, so we'll also be working on that too, so. I, I'm sure Brandy will talk about that when she, when she's here, so.
Thank you. Angie.
Just so you know, this is sort of the second go-around on the standards-based report card. Um, and so before we really roll that out, like at parent-teacher conferences. Um, it's my hope that we, we get the board um, brought up to speed, the parents understand a little bit more. And that the conversion chart of a four and an A and a three and a B and da, 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 da. Um, starts to go away, but it is sort of the, um. It's, it's sort of the way to going back to measuring students, uh, a little more realistic towards the standards. And believe it or not, from our conversation that we had with the RIDE people, which is the governor's initiative. Um, when you really start looking at the profile of graduating, a lot of that, you're really looking back at the portfolio. It's almost back twenty years, um, for us. Um, uh, but anyway, um, I think we have to be very much aware that. You know, we need to bring everybody along with that, because there is some real confusion and, and anxiety that goes along with those kinds of things, so. Um, he'll work on the backside, we'll work on the front side.
Just like bell bottoms, it just comes around again, right, so. Tyler, sorry.
And I was nervous to do this without Sonya next to me, but I got Beau and Brad taking care of it, but I, the only thing I have to report to you guys, um. Same as where the dress code change happened, um, every year at the end of the year, I meet with my staff, we do some anonymous stuff too, but we just, what's working, what do we need to fix? How do we improve? Um, and I was kind of surprised, but a incredible majority of my staff said it was time to finally. Um, put a deadline on implementing standards-based grading at the middle school. Um, we've dabbled in that, those of you guys that have been on the board for a while, I think you've heard those discussions before, but they said, let's, let's pick a deadline and let's go. Um, so in order to do a lot of that communicating and building and, and having a, a proper plan in place. Um, I'm giving my guys two years, so we're looking at um, August of twenty-twenty-seven, where we would have everything in place. And also where I have enough time to, to help parents understand what that means, and, and really, I think where our staff, it surprises me that they wanted to do it, because it's a. Absolute ton of work, and there's already a lot of work that we have to do all the time. Um, but I think my guys just really realized that it's better for student learning and it's better for conversations with students and parents, and so. Um, we're gonna, we're gonna do that work, I need help from the tech department, I need help from Sonya, um, I'll be communicating with parents, but. I did want you guys to, to have a heads up that we're working on that over the next couple of years, and I'll just periodically give you an update, and then when you see some different things come out. Uh, you'll know what we're talking about, and then otherwise, I'm still learning myself, so if you ever just want to stop by and visit about it, we sure can too, but just wanted it on your radar for the long term.
Awesome. Any questions for Tyler? Thank you. Angie.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a couple of things, um, I talked to Shelby with our insurance company and. There's no concrete numbers yet, but about a six percent increase on our liability, liability insurance. Which will be about fifteen thousand dollars roughly. And last year was that first um, rider policy for the wind and hail that we had to purchase. And that's a ten percent increase, roughly, it'll be about six thousand dollars. Um, and then he also spoke to me about the firearm. Insurance for the firearm, and I don't know if you remember, but I reached out a while back and they weren't really worried about it. And now they're saying that the insurance will exclude any firearm. Um, claims, any like an accident, a, a, accidental discharge and someone got hurt or something got. Blown up, I guess, whatever, they wouldn't. Uh, uh, recognize that, so they would, they would be doing a different rider for thirty-five hundred dollars per staff member that carries. It's something that they're looking at. None of that is in concrete, it's just. What they're working on, so.
Per year.
Yes.
Per year.
So.
So.
It'll be thirty-five hundred dollars per staff member per year for insurance to. Cover for any accidents additionally, yes.
Wow.
So there's that, and then, um. Uh, Paul from Riley and Company is our auditor, and he reached out to me and I asked him to give me a quote, and he said it'd be roughly around. Thirty-two-five for the audit for this year, thirty-two thousand five hundred dollars, so I wanted to let you guys know that and. I, as most of the districts in the area use him for CBI, because we don't have a lot of options, so. If. No, there are, there are no options, but I was trying to be nice, so I will go ahead and tell him to. Do that. I have one good thing, our, our workers' comp rate went down by point zero nine percent. Okay, you know, there's always something. Almost, 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 just so, that's all I have unless you have any questions.
Any questions for Angie? I just. Am so pleased we got another unfunded mandate from the legislature, who said there would be. Insurance companies would never charge us extra for that, so. That's my personal opinion on that one, okay. We're gonna, you'll be next, Brad. Okay. Board, board report?
Dana. The EWC BOCs met, it was an extremely short fifteen-minute, we went over the budget. That was it.
And they're gonna be okay budget-wise?
Yep.
Good. Good, all right, um, I participated in one of the professional judgment panels for the legislature's consultants. For the recalibration of the school district funding model. With Dr. Picas the other day, we spent four hours, there were um, quite a few business managers. Which was really nice to hear from, so. Did you see that letter, Angie? Okay, if you could participate, that would be great, um. The big difference this time was that they have always taken stakeholder comments at the end of their modeling process. And with feedback over the past ten years, the, the past two times that they did this. Um, they decided to take the stakeholder feedback first to try to incorporate more of that feedback in the model, so. We talked about school security, we talked about all the items, um, from the, from the district court judgment against the state. And how those could be funded better and what schools need. Um, we talked about CTE and uh, minimums, for example. That we get zero point six full-time employees for our CTE programs and. Our students and our community and our parents and this board all want more CTE opportunities. Um, so that. Giving, giving schools one full teacher in some of those categories. Um, is the only thing that really makes sense for getting kids the services they need and want. Um. I've found it very hopeful. Uh, at this point, that they did it ahead of time, but man, if you have a chance, and people did come and go, so don't feel like you need all four hours. They made sure that every single person who wanted to speak got to speak and, and people asked questions and, and. Talked about what's going on in their school districts with funding needs and. So we talked about uh, counseling. Um, just about almost everything, so. Um, it's, I highly recommend that everybody try to get in on one of those for at least an hour. Um. There. This is, this is kind of where we start pushing for what we know we need and want here, so. Any questions about that? All right. Any other reports? Let's see here. Oh, our Building and Grounds Committee met, and, and Billy's gonna report. The things that Adam didn't mention in his report.
So, um, Adam, the only thing he didn't mention was that the maintenance group is taking on changing all the filters in. All buildings, um, I think that was roughly two hundred and eighty filters, um, grease and everything, that's every quarter. We talked about maybe future down the road, the other three roofs, right, that need done. After, after the big one, so if the money's there, we're gonna look at doing those, so. That was about all I had that he didn't talk about.
And that we will probably need to look at a, a vehicle for plowing soon. Um, yeah. Yep. Yeah, all right. Future agenda items. We'll have our budget, our final budget. Um, hearing, right? In July. Oh, I thought we had to do it in the end of June, by the end of June, before July first. Fifteen? Okay. I couldn't remember which, okay. But we will do that in July. Anyone have anything else? All right. Well, at this time then. We're going to go to discussion items. Policy, CKA firearms personnel authorized to carry.
So, Madam Chair, um, the reason I put this under discussion items is, um, you'll see that a lot of the four A schools. Um, are actually, um. Are in second or third reading of their, um, carry policy. Um, Abby, you can jump in at any time, and, and I could go on forever, but I'm, I'm not, so truly. Uh, my thought is right now, is because of the newness, um, because of all the mandates being put on the school. That we really wouldn't put in a policy at this time, um, we would handle it very similar to. To any other state law that, um, you know, you have to be in compliance of the state law, you have to be careful. Um, uh, the thirty-five hundred dollars does not concern me as much as. I think if somebody chooses to carry, they choose to carry that liability with them. Um, I think there's just too many things to try to monitor in a policy, so I think you could always be in violation of a policy. Um, and then the other thing that I think time is on our side. Um, after this goes through a calendar year, you find out what the big schools learned or what they didn't learn. Um, then maybe that gives us a little bit more clear vision. Um, again, I just don't know if anyone's really thought about the idea that if you do do that and you're doing it for. You know, to make sure schools are not soft targets, well, I, I'm all for that. Um, but I also have to think that a lot of times, none of us think that that could be somebody else's child. It may not be that stranger danger. Um, so that's just my quick thoughts, I could answer any questions that you have. Um, I didn't want to spring anything on you, um, you know, as far as this is a policy and we're gonna go. Three readings, because I thought we should have discussion first, and Abby might have some thoughts and. I would definitely listen to any board thoughts as well.
And Abby?
Yes, Madam Chair.
I also have here uh, copies for all the board of Campbell County's School District Number One's. Um. Draft policy that they were working on. Um, so. I guess I'm, I'm really not used to. Doing no policy in response to legislation, because. Anyway, what, what are your thoughts on what Brad said?
Yeah, um. Uh, you know, it's dealer's choice on, and I apologize for not having my video on, every time I try to turn it on, I get a warning for unstable. Internet connections, so this seems to be working, um. I, uh, from a legal standpoint, it really is dealer's choice what the board wants to do.
Whole lot of people in, in jails and prisons in Wyoming who really didn't mean to do anything wrong, but they screwed up and they did. But apparently Becky Hadlock and other elected officials in Wyoming are in fact above the law, at least, that's. That's what I think the governor showed us with his decision.
And I think he did too, and I, I, I think he makes it blatant by avoiding the clear. Violation of the law, the rest of it, you can. Yeah, she got the, the testing done, it was at the last minute, at the last chance, and she failed it, but she did submit the report on the day. Even though it was like eleven fifty-nine or whatever, you know, like, there's some ways you could finagle the other things, but he. Blatantly ignores the malicious intent and the felony committed.
And he jumps through so many hoops to let her off.
Uh, from a legal standpoint, it really is dealer's choice what the board wants to do. Brad is absolutely correct, that a state law is a state law. There are certain requirements within that state law, um, that have to be followed. Um. As you can see from the policy that Gillette is considering. Um. You know, there, there are ways to. Push back or kind of try to carve out a sliver of control for the districts. Um, but I, I do agree with Brad's thought that time, time. Is hopefully on your side with this, I mean, you're going to have these bigger school districts like Natrona, like Gillette, like Laramie County. Um, enact policies that probably will be challenged in court, or they might. You know, initiate court actions on their own, and it will give you as the smaller districts. Um, guidance on what you want to do, you know, the couple of school districts that I've reached out to. Many of them are considering not enacting a policy, the ones that are considering enacting. Policies are kind of taking what, you know, Gillette is considering and doing a few steps back from that. And kind of letting Gillette take on that fight. Um. Or they're having, you know, they, they add training requirements, um, I believe in Goshen. County, uh, their police department offered to come in and do the trainings for the individuals. And do the trainings for the individuals who did want to carry guns, um. The school district was going to pay for those trainings and then they could. Uh track who did attend those trainings and make sure that they kept those certifications up, so. That there are ways. To create a policy, um you don't want your policy to be a double-edged sword where. It cuts but then can cut against you as well.
My biggest concern is is not about the individual attending events. My biggest concern is that people who are carrying, who are around our kids every single day. Have all the necessary training they need to uh be able to. Handle their equipment safely, have had some scenario training. So they don't shoot, see, shoot the first person they see moving, um things like that, I think. Um and does the statute say that we cannot? Does it say, I don't recall, that we have to pay for any training or? I don't remember that.
It does, it does not. Um the, a couple of the smaller school district attorneys that I spoke to. Have chosen to pay for that training because then they can track. Who is being trained and make sure that they remain up to date on their certifications. Um if the individual pays for their training and certification on their own. We are not allowed to ask if they are certified.
Um, that's what I thought.
Yeah.
Okay. I knew they had tied that in there somehow, and then I assume um. I don't recall it addressing liability insurance costs at all, so. Is there a way to legally pass that on to the person who wants to carry?
Um, I think you could. I need to ponder that question a little bit.
That is just one of my questions.
But that that was my thought when I was listening to the discussion about what the 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 additional thirty-five hundred. Would be, um, you know, you're. E- excuse my language, but you're kind of damned with damned if you do, damned if you don't with this, it's it's just. It's a pretty horrific piece of legislation.
Yes, alright, um. I guess my question for you would be this. In the Campbell County policy, would you be able to in the next um couple of weeks? Let us know which parts of that one are, you feel like aren't complying a hundred percent with the new law.
That are more of a pushback against the legislation, yeah, absolutely.
And then we can just, we can discuss once, cuz. I I'm assuming I'm probably the only one sitting here who saw this before tonight. So that gives these guys time to look over this policy. Um Teton Counties is also available to see, and I have. Um, I have a copy of it, I think, anyway.
Yeah, if you um would have Brad or CeeLo pass on Teton Counties, I have Gillette's. Um and what I'll do, um honestly, as soon as possible. The board can kind of read what Gillette's has and then I will. Send my thoughts either in red line or highlighted.
Okay, great.
For distribution to the board.
That will really help with our future discussion too. Alright, Jason, you had your hand up. Microphone, please. Thank you.
Um Madam Chair, I guess, one, I don't disagree with you, I mean, I would like. I see the benefits of us having a policy, but I think, again, correct me if I'm wrong, she stated, you know. That it is a double-edged sword, that we put something in as a policy and we don't cross our Ts or dot our Is in it. It, it's not. Quite what the state has set forth. We can set ourselves up pretty good for.
Right, that's why I asked. Her to look that over.
And then going, and again, I looking through some of that, I assumed it was Campbell County, cuz it says Campbell County, but. Some of those, I guess, too, the other, the questions I would have is. Where Campbell County has district-approved training, what that, what does that look like as far as?
I'm, I think it's all training and curriculum shall be approved by local law enforcement, so I'm assuming. They're saying if local law enforcement has approved the training, then the district would, they would have it approved by local law.
And then.
That's how I read that anyway, that probably could be stated more clearly than.
Well, yeah, cuz I kind of read it as the district is gonna decide the fifty-six hours of what training that person. Was gonna do, which I wouldn't agree with, cuz, I mean.
Well, and that's, I assume that's the, where it says a minimum of thirty-two hours of handgun training with live fire. Um, that probably isn't covered in the legislation, but so those, those next two bulleted. Sections, I assume are some of their approved training.
And the other thing, and it's not an issue, but the other thing I would. Probably like to see different is where it says approved by local law enforcement. I don't think it necessarily needs to be local law enforcement.
Oh, so like if we have someone at the academy to do it.
Dean, uh Tac One, he puts on courses that are, or if you have, uh. I mean, the feds have courses that that can be done.
Right.
It just doesn't necessarily have to be at the local level either, so.
Good point.
I I I do like, and uh there was some areas in here, I did like the fact that. Um it did require the carrier to have some form of um. Oh, where did I, where did I see it at? Um. Stop the bleeding training, some type of uh tactical first aid CPR stuff, I I do like the fact that. That at least Campbell County has that in there for for that, so. That's all, thank you.
Any other discussion ideas? Dana.
I guess I am wary of jumping into a policy. Until maybe some time has passed and we see what the other, the larger schools have gone through.
And for me. There's likely going to be someone carrying into school every day. Who's teaching, starting in August. So I don't know that I'm willing to wait to see what happens. I mean, I'm not asking, I don't want us to do a policy. That will get us sued right off the bat because it obviously does not follow the law. I I want us to, I would prefer we we do it and we know what kind of training. The people who are walking in every day and being around our kids has. Because they have to keep that gun away from those kids and keep it safe and. I guess I'm a better safe than sorry, I'm worried if we do nothing, the chance of us having an incident. That's probably totally unintended is much higher, so. Jason.
Madam Chair, maybe I misunderstood some of my reading on that, but doesn't the school still have a say? When a teacher is working, whether they, we can authorize or not authorize?
No, we have to allow anyone who wants to do it to do it now.
Okay, I miss, I miss.
So if we have, if we have a hundred of our teachers do it, we need to come up with three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in insurance money. That's where we are. So I guess we will, um I will make sure and share. The other ones that I've looked at ahead of time and and get those to everybody in email and Abby, I will be sure and get you. Teton Counties, um. Jason, you had something else?
Brad or the big, the big cheeses here do?
Do we have an idea as being teachers? Make any comments about wanting to or would like to, or do we have any numbers that may or may not want to?
I I may have one that's more of a shared staff that might be interested, but I I haven't had a lot of staff express a lot of interest. They were more concerned with the legislation. Prior to it passing, I haven't heard much from middle school specific as far as people interested in carrying at this time.
I think the level of interest is going to be on the level and investment in which they have to to incur, so. You know, the biometric containers, the um training, the ongoing training. Some policies are actually saying what kind of ammo you can have on district, you know, grounds, that kind of stuff. Um is it a hundred people? I don't think so. Um but again, I mean, if they're. If they really are good at concealed carry, we would never know. Now, open carry is a whole different issue.
Alright, so we will, this will be on our agenda again in July, in June. Probably July too, no, June, we have to do it by June, July first. Cuz they can't officially do it until July first, so. Yep. Jason?
Sorry, I guess Brad, have we thought about, so, I mean, you made a good point. We won't know if they're carrying cuz it's concealed, but if we have a policy that says you gotta have X, Y, Z hours. But we find out they are carrying, but they don't have those hours, what does that look like to that teacher?
I would say then it becomes a law enforcement issue, cuz then you're in violation of state law and our board policy. If you adopt a policy.
But the, well, and that's what I'm saying, the policy wouldn't have anything to do with the state law, though.
The policy would be a violation for the staff member on school grounds.
Right.
Um, and again, I I look at it a lot like a driver's license, I mean, we have a lot of people that have. Those by state law, I'm not sure they're all good drivers. Um I think you have the same risk, if not even a more risk. Um I just really worry that you're going to have staff members that are going to have to meet more qualifications. Than other people that are gonna be allowed on your school grounds, um that we have no say over whatsoever.
Well, and I guess my point is, is as a board, you know, when we're, we're, and I hate to use the word consequences, but that's something we'd really have to. Really think about is if we have somebody that doesn't have the certifications, qualifications. I mean, how severe of a punishment is that gonna be for that individual teacher? If we have somebody that doesn't have the certifications, qualifications. I mean, how severe of a punishment is that gonna be for that individual teacher?
I would recommend to the board that if you have a firearms violation. Um I would think that it would probably be dismissed from this district, and my hope would be. His professional teaching standards board would look at it equally as serious and probably suspend or take away. Their teaching license. Now. That's a pipe dream, just so you know.
But again, that just.
Cuz property is property.
Again, to keep in mind is is, I mean. At what cost, at what length are we going to?
And those are all the things we want to think through and discuss and.
Yeah, this is a big one. I mean, there's a lot of ways to look at it, I just, um. Again, I'll just leave it with this, I mean, I think everyone, I and I like my guns, but. Um you better really think about if you have to use that and that's a child that you, you know, um. That's gotta be in the back of your mind, and then I don't care what kind of training you have. You've got to be able to apply that training at a very difficult time. Um I've seen people run right by fire extinguishers. I've seen people do laps around AEDs, um stop the bleed, um. I I've seen my wide range of sports occur during those things, um. I just, you know, my my hope is, is that somebody still doesn't think that's the answer in solving any resolution issues with. Student versus student, student, staff, referee, whatever you wanna call it, um it just does add a different dimension. To where we're at in today's public education world.
Tyler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The only thing that I noticed throughout the Campbell County policy. That if we were to adopt a policy, obviously, it's not gonna happen this moment. Um is there anything we can do about, there's nothing in here about a psyche eval. Because, I'm sorry, anybody can, mostly anybody can pass a live fire training like this. Are they gonna be stable enough to pass and be able to carry it properly?
Yeah, I believe.
I I know even in the military, you have to pass site before you can. Carry, even if you're on duty, if not, you have another person with you on duty to make sure you don't lose it.
Abby, I don't believe that's legal, correct or correct me, help, help me here.
Help me, please, Abby.
Yeah, um I I am, I am with you one hundred percent that I would love to require a psych eval. But I think that puts you in incredibly dangerous territory with employment law. Um because, a- and I'm just gonna use Brad as an example. Say Brad is carrying a gun. He passes all certifications to carry a gun, he has to take a psyche eval, doesn't pass the psyche eval. You now know he hasn't passed a psyche eval. How do you separate the fact that he didn't pass a psyche eval? And allow him to continue to be superintendent, um. When it was due in part to wanting to carry a gun, you just, it becomes. The messiest potential litigation, litigation is issue I can think of with this whole thing.
And the discussion during committee and floor debates on that, that. That was something they they absolutely did not want to approve, so.
Yeah, I I just think from an employment law standpoint. It it just sets you up to get sued over and over and over again.
Yep, anything else? Okay, thank you, Abby. Thanks, Tyler. Oh.
So, a little sidebar here, I did some research and granted, it was just on my phone on the internet. So I couldn't be wrong. I can't find a single case of somebody with a concealed carry permit doing a mass shooting. I might be wrong. I found one where a mass shooter applied for a concealed carry permit and was denied. And it put him on a watch list, but it didn't help because he still shot up a school. And this is where I get to the point where we better just decide if we're gonna spread fear or faith. Because they're here. I know people that have been packing in that school since I was in high school. I know that for a fact. Did we have any problems? No. I heard the same thing when they passed constitutional concealed carry. It was gonna be blood in the streets. It's fine. These are our neighbors, these are our friends, they're our family. They're the same people we see every day on the street. They could be concealed carried out there, I don't know, because it's concealed carry. It doesn't bother me. I have faith in the people that I live around, that's why we live here, right? It's a good place to raise our kids and go to school. And if I trust him to be around my kids all day at school. And if I trust them to be around my kids all day at school, then I trust them. Now, just because somebody's been trained, I have actually been in a crisis situation with people who went through. Loads of training, survival training, crisis training, the whatever, whatever EMS, blah, blah. And at the moment of crisis, they lost their mind. They stood there blubbering, blah, 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 blah. Doesn't matter how much you've been trained. Some people short circuit, some people don't. Once again, I'm just stating facts. We can sit here and what if this all day long. At the end of the day. I put my faith in God that we're gonna get through this, just like we always have. And do the best we can with what we've got. Because at the end of the day, if somebody wants to do something bad, they're going to do it. And you better pray to God that there's somebody there that can stop them. Period. I don't care if they're a concealed carry permit holder. I don't care if they're a cop. I don't care. Make it stop. I understand that this is a messy piece of legislation. I also understand why they did it. A gun-free zone is a beacon. It doesn't matter if it's a nightclub in Florida. Theater in Aurora, Colorado, or a Christian school in Georgia. Having a gun-free zone is a beacon to these crazy people. Whatever we gotta do, let's make it stop.
Well, and we, we already do have fear amongst our staff about colleagues carrying too. I mean, that fear, we, I talked to a number of people. Last spring when that legislation was in the process. And when we were doing town halls, there were a number of people who talked to me afterwards about how worried they were about that. So I, I think we already have some fear to address and I, I think. Requiring some additional training might help allay that in, in the district.
Just a couple of quick questions, I guess, um. Is there any workshops that any school districts are doing, trying to hit up on this stuff? That you, anybody knows of? Like, is there any school districts getting together and doing a workshop?
No, most of.
Over how to. Personnel to carry within their school.
So are you talking about like W S B A having?
A workshop or?
No, I.
Couple of school districts getting together.
Everybody's kinda, I mean, I don't know, so your attendants are talking, our board chairs are.
We have, we as a district have not done anything in that, but. When we do our tag one training here for both students and staff, I do know there's additional training at cost. Um, that individuals do take for gun awareness, um, shooting, those kinds of things. But it's not directed to us, no.
Okay, alright, you know, I guess what I mean is a workshop on how to build a policy, cause we're talking about a lot of this stuff and. I'm kinda with you, Paul. I mean, yeah, I trust everybody in this room. I mean, if you're gonna carry, you're gonna carry. Not seeing anything dangerous in here. My big one, my one big concern is. At an elementary school, if you have a bunch of young kids jumping and crawling on you and you got a pistol on your hip. I don't see anything in here that states what kind of holster you have to have. You know, law enforcement has the. You might correct me, I can't remember what it's called, but it's the two points where you gotta have pressure to pull it and plus your finger on. To slide the pistol out, but none of these policies are talking about. True safety of carrying, it's talking about training, which like you said, Paul, training only goes so far. If your equipment fails, your equipment fails and we're not, nobody's even talking about that and you get a bunch of kids jumping on you. If we're gonna make a policy, it better have something in there about the equipment and.
And I.
Whether it's ready for us to carry.
We can ask Abby, um, too. I, it was, as I recall, and I read a lot of. I read that a lot of times as it was amended as well, but, so I may be off here, but I believe the law. Stipulated we could not set that kind of requirement. Is that correct?
You know, and Madam Chair, my memory is as foggy as yours is on that. I remember there being. Maybe it was a committee discussion. Um, about that, I, I will go back and have a definite answer for that on, for you guys.
And I will make sure that the statute that we. Get the stat, the new statute emailed to each one of you too, so you can see exactly. What can be required and what can't, because, yeah.
Yeah, and sorry, Madam Chair, but I mean, I don't want somebody walking into our school with a duct tape holster. You know, you know what I'm saying? And I'm not fearful of the person next to me doing something, but I'm fearful of a kid jumping on somebody. Somebody gets excited to see Mr. Bartlett for the day and runs up once to high five him and. Whoa, my duct tape holster fell down and now my pistol just dropped out of the bottom of my pants instead of having an actual holster.
Yeah, cause they're, they're.
Those are the kind of things I'd like to see in a policy at least.
And there have been a few things in schools that approved it quite, quite some time ago. Um, Paul.
To ease your mind, if you see the duct tape, it's not concealed very well, so I think that that's kind of a caveat. But I think this kinda goes back to the faith part. I've never met anybody. And I know a lot of people who have a concealed carry permit. I've never met anyone that puts that gun on, that takes it lightly. I mean, they understand every time they put that gun, wherever they put it, whether it's on an ankle or a hip. What that is there for. And I was joking with Jason at my daughter's graduation party and I said, that's why I don't own a taser. With my temper, I'd probably use it. Whereas with a gun, it's serious. You don't use it. You know what I mean? I, I think that goes back to the faith part. If you're gonna, if you're gonna take it serious enough to carry it. You understand the seriousness of the situation that you could potentially cause.
Correct, but I'll add to that. Don't most law, law enforcements add a holster that requires two ways to get the gun out? Where a personal person might just go buy a leather holster. Is, that's why I'm, I'm bringing that up. There is no more requirements for that.
I'm not, I, I don't disagree with Paul, you know, having faith in humanity, um. But I can say in my line of work, I see behind the curtains and. There are people in this community that shouldn't even have a tree branch that looks like a gun. And unfortunately, this legislation gives anybody and everybody the right. To shove a shotgun down their pant leg.
Only if they have a concealed carry permit. They have to have the permit. And I realize what you're saying about humanity, but everybody I've ever seen that has gone through the process of getting concealed carry permit. And holds that permit knows exactly how serious the situation is. And I mean, I, I understand what you're saying about, there are, even in our community, we have some wild ones, but at the same time. I feel a lot safer knowing that people have my back and the ability to protect me. Then just waiting and hoping everything turns out alright.
And I think that's a, 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 a small caveat to that is, like you said, and, and, and you, you said it well. You, you, you have to obtain your permit. Uh, so there is a silver lining, so to speak, if you wanna say to, to that, but.
I'm, I'm glad you have that kind of faith. I've had someone eat at my dining table and be in my home. Who had a permit and is now in prison for their really bad judgment, so. I don't have the same faith as you and I probably used to. And I wish that had never happened, but it did. I don't have the same faith as you and I probably used to. And I wish that had never happened, but it did.
I guess I'm gonna step in. I think we're beating a dead horse. I think there's too many what ifs. I mean, this was thrown at us. Um, I see both sides of the story. You might require a staff member that wants to carry. All this training, but anybody can walk into the building at any time, if they got a concealed weapon, they can be carrying. I mean, there's a lot of what ifs. I think we're beating a dead horse. Um, I hate to be reactive on this one, but I kinda agree that. Throw some other policies out there and pick from this policy, this policy, what works and what don't work. Is it the right thing? No, but if we have to have this done by July? Right?
Yep, July first. They're going to, yeah, anybody can carry into this school.
Mm-hmm, it just if the training, we have to have a policy before July if we're gonna require all the training, but. Any person off the street, if they got a concealed weapon, can walk into the school. Events, anything that we're not requiring. But we're gonna put this burden on the teachers that are staff members that want to hopefully protect the kids. You're gonna have to pay a thirty-five hundred dollars. You have to take all this training at your own cost. I don't know, too many what ifs, I think, if you're looking at.
Yeah, I don't think we can make them do that at their own cost, the training.
You just, you just said, well, the training, you just said the thirty-five hundred dollars. The insurance you said, right?
If we had, if, if we, yeah, and, and I don't think in the statute as. Was amended and finally written that we can.
That we can make them pay that, okay. I thought you at one time said, okay. I, I just think there's too many what ifs and I think we're beating a dead horse with, you know, do we trust people? Do we not trust people? I don't see, I still see a lot of people out in public and there, a lot of people carrying out there, I mean. I, I don't know, I, there's too many what ifs, I think, in my mind.
Well, there, there are, but we have to determine what we wanna do about those. Either if you want to do nothing.
If we have a policy, we have to have it by July. If we don't do. I, I understand where you're coming from, but I, I just, I don't know. Too fresh for me and we can sit here and do we trust people? Do we not trust people? I, I think we're beating a dead horse. I mean, I understand we need to talk about it, but. I don't know, maybe I'm not making sense, but.
Sure.
I just know that my daughter got stopped in my driveway one night by people who we still don't know who they were. And when she got home, my blood ran cold because she had no way to defend herself. That's a sick feeling. Now, I don't care what anybody says. Every person has a right to defend themselves and thank God it turned out the way it did. But I can guarantee you. That I would have felt a lot safer had she had the ability to defend herself that night instead of sitting there with her cell phone. Taking video saying, at least if they find my phone, they'll know who did it. That's helpless and I don't ever want anybody to feel helpless.
Right, especially those little children who felt helpless when their bodies were ripped up with bullets.
Because a crazy person came into a gun-free zone. And nobody was there to defend him.
So I'm gonna try to hit on Bill. Are, are we gonna try to write a policy or no?
No, don't try. If you want a policy, we should, Abby, as returning to write a policy that fits her needs, because. She will defend that in court. That's why we have.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I guess.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, that, I guess that's what I meant. Are we?
Yeah.
Yeah, are we choosing to have, to want her to start one or no?
Well, she's, she's gonna review, um, at least a couple of these. I'm gonna get the other ones to you as well. Please take these with you and read them carefully. Um, and then we will have. Um, some recommendations from her and some information. Um, for our June eleventh meeting. Cause it's a hard topic and. An unfunded mandate as well, so, Jason.
I guess, but, so are you, are we saying that? Are we gonna get together prior to that and give her all our thoughts and ideas?
No, we'll discuss it at our next meeting, so everybody has time to do, to, to read and, and if you have more questions. And I assume. Once you've had time to think more about it and, and any other questions you have or, or comments. That we can decide, um, on the eleventh, if we're going to not have any policy. Or if we want to have, um, some requirements of our own.
Okay, that, that's what I was getting at that, at that, at that time, we, we would give her, okay, and then.
And then.
Prior, or then our following meetings, if that gives her enough time.
If we decide to have a policy, then we would, we would have it to look at before the last meeting in June.
Well, either way, I would, I would still like her to, with our ideas. Present us with some different options, so we can physically look at the potential policy and read it and see how that looks.
And Madam Chair, be my recommendation that this would probably would be one thing you definitely do on three readings. Because you're gonna want other people's, you're gonna want staff input, you're gonna want community input. Um, so what you end up with in the beginning and possibly end up with the end might look considerably different. Um, and remember, I mean, really, it's, it's when the students get back is your biggest date. I mean, I don't think, I mean, Adam and I haven't had a conversation where he's chomping at the bit to, you know, to have. Permission to carry or, or anybody else, but if there is, I think time is important. There's gonna be a time component if we do the training or not. Um, so. I don't, there's really not a rush to it. It's just, it is, it's one of those things that's gonna take a lot of different thoughts. And, and I think where you end up from your first reading to your last could be considerably different. And the other thing is, is I think Abby, and correct me if I'm wrong, but isn't there one or two school districts that are already? In current legal action over their last policies?
There are, um. Uh, I think it's Youwinta.
I think so.
I wanna say Big Horn, but that might be incorrect.
I thought it was Youwinta too. Alright, so we'll. Look at this again, and now we will take a recess. From this meeting and have our rec board meeting. Does anyone, oh, we'll, we'll take a little break right after the rec board meeting and come back to this meeting. So, this meeting is in recess. At least once, I don't like to bang it up.
Okay, we'll call the Eastern West County Recreation, um, Board to order. I, you have an agenda in front of you. I have no changes. Um, do I have a motion to? Okay, been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the agenda? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, same sign. Um, agendas approved, recognitions. Are there any recognitions for the rec board this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on to visitors' comments, staff input and special programs. Is there any comments? Seeing none, move on to action items, consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the consent agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, same sign. Consent agenda is passed. Have no old business for you, but we do have some new business. Therese?
Oh, sorry. My, the stuff I sent was kind of a rough sketch of trying to save money based on next year's budget. So it doesn't necessarily. So it doesn't necessarily have to be implemented this summer, but I'm thinking next year. Um, but we're not real busy in this wintertime in the evenings. And we have a lot of guards that are there. And so I thought if we could maybe reduce the nights to better utilize our resources, like a couple nights of open swim, so people would know. Cause I mean, if you go to other rec centers, they're not, a, a lot of them aren't open every single night. I did provide some information on different rec center hours for summer. But I was just trying to look for a way to save cost as well as shortages on lifeguards. That's a real thing. Um, we're okay right now. But it is difficult to get guards, especially during the school year with sports. And so just trying to find ways to do that. And so if you have any questions.
Thank you for doing that. Teresa.
Mm hmm.
Um, there's no other, Teresa. Sorry.
It's okay. I get called that too.
Um, there's no, no other discussion on new business. We'll move on to, I don't have anything for your information unless anybody else has anything.
So what I was thinking, we already have the schedule out for June, so I, I wouldn't do it for June. But what, after kind of thinking it through, I, I was thinking maybe I could monitor summer hours specifically evening so that we can see how busy we are, kinda like I did with the weight room. And that way we can make a decision for next year before hiring.
Okay.
But if you, I mean, you can tailor that till the next meeting, but it is business that requires an action. Or we can go, I mean.
Well, right now we're just monitoring it, right? So just, we gotta make vote for the monitor, the hours for the summer to adjust next summer?
On monitoring it if she feels the need to change the hours in winter time.
Yeah, cause I think if we would have, cause I was on vacation and we were kind of having this discussion in April. But just with everything that happened, we had to hire guards, we're training guards and now we just thought, okay, that way we can get it out to the community before the following summer because our new summer hour, our summer hours start next week. And so I think maybe it might be easier that way.
Mr. Chair, I think you, the, the bigger issue in front of you is probably not your usage, but your budget. And so I think as you monitor it, you're gonna have to monitor two pieces. You have to monitor usage and you're gonna have to watch where you are in your budget because one of them could trigger the other faster.
Yeah.
Okay, um, it's been properly moved and seconded. Is there any other discussion on that? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, same sign. Alright, that's been passed. Um, okay, so I have nothing else for your information. So everybody knows, um, I do got it in discussion items. Um, so everybody knows me and Teresa sat down and had a conversation. Um, we know what happened with the toilets earlier this year, um, when the facilities were rented. So that's why you see, uh, policy K F and for use of district facilities and K F R, community use of district facilities. Kind of looking at those and I'd like to get with, um, Brad sometime and see what we could do. Um, some of the things we discussed, so you know, was the fees and the wording and how, you know, if we need to revise that and how that looks. Um, there are some things for like tournaments and the fees. It'd be nice if we are charging to use the gymnasiums, if we could start charging upfront before. So when, you know, that money is actually getting put in there. Um, something else I would like to see changed is I'd like to see a deposit for damages. Um, After the Mm hmm. And that would
Just to let you know a little bit of board history here, um, not to be in an argument, but in the past, one of the conversations that we've had is, well, wait a minute. Yes, that toilet did back up during that Saturday event, but it was slow on Friday and no one took care of it and no one said anything. So now you're charging my group to fix something that you should have addressed on Friday. And there's really no way to win that argument, just so you know. Um, I'm not, not as concerned about having a deposit upfront. Um, but in the past, where, where we have been lucky and I'll use the baseball analogy. So we hadn't moved baseball inside one night because of weather, somebody doesn't catch well, the baseball goes through the sheet rock. The, the baseball people just simply pay for it. The problem is somebody's gotta, somebody's gotta do that work. I mean, somebody's gotta, first of all, check to see, was that not done during phys ed? Was it not during a dance? Well, I mean, when is all this taking place? And so there are a lot of different pieces. And then also I will just remind you that it has already been brought to my attention by a group that these are taxpayer facilities and we're already tax paying people being abused. And so now we're going to pass more onto our kids, which is gonna become out of parents' pockets and we decided to build these for kids. So just keep all of that in your, um, tool belt. Um, because I can tell you, I still have some scars from those. Um, anybody that's been on the board very long probably has. Um, I think we have great facilities. We've been blessed with people that have taken care of them. Um, they are getting older. Um, but for years we've been very gracious and now we're going to be changing our direction. And there will be some resistance.
So I'll use kind of two examples. One, the swim team because we have used the swimming pool. Um, we would pay for custodial staff. And then I'm not trying to throw anybody under the bus, but we felt like we could clean it better and keep the money in our pocket. So we did. Um, and we did have a toilet overflow because of excessive use. I mean, it, I think it's just anything. Um, so I see the point of the school district charging. Um, tournaments, I think, and I, I, I'm gonna include the swim team in that, that if they're charging a fee for their kids to participate in that, why not add five dollars to that fee and pass it so that the school can have some of it for the damages and the excessive use. That's just an idea. Um, we're one of the few districts as far as swimming that we don't have to pay. And a lot of the basketball people do have to pay rental fees for tournaments. I think practices and stuff for all of our kids is great, but a tournament, you're getting all that outside kids from different places and another few dollars for a tournament is no big deal. And I feel like maybe that's how an organization can pay for it. I know that I saw the parking lot of the volleyball tournament and it was packed. Super packed. And so even, I don't know how many people participated and they were collecting money at the door, I believe. So, yeah, and so, you know, I think in good faith, I'm, so that bike tour that came through here, they gave the school a check for letting us, just out of a goodwill. And so sometimes I think I, I don't think maybe they wouldn't fill. I mean, I, I think maybe they'd be okay. I don't know. That's just my opinion on a tournament. Now, every night basketball practices, I think we shouldn't charge. But I was just thinking tournaments in general. That's just my opinion.
Yeah, and I'm gonna agree with that. I mean, a normal night of practice ain't no big deal, but I mean, you talked about parent, people are gonna complain about charging money to use it while they're already getting charged to get in there. And I'm not wanting to charge an individual. I'm wanting to charge a, a group that if we have a toilet issue on a weekend and have to call an emergency plumber in, it gets fixed. I'm without the, we're, we've been talking about with budgets with cutting, having to cut all this stuff. I mean, we don't need to be acquiring extra items during the weekends when the facility ain't in use for something school related, but for something else. That's the, the, this is the only reason why I wanna require, I would like to see a deposit for something like that. They're gaining money and I'm not trying to gain money or take money away from them. That's not the idea. The idea behind it is just simply if something's damaged, it's gotta get paid for somehow. Is, is it always up to the school to foot that bill or is it up to an organization that's making money off of it that weekend already? So.
I, I tend to agree with Brad. Um, I mean, and, and you use a toilet as the example. It gets flushed a hundred and seventy times a day. And then Saturday, I, I'm the first one to flush it in it. The baffle breaks. Well, how is that? I mean, it, it's been used and abused all day long, five days a week. So again, so how do you know that was me versus where normal wear and tear on, on a certain piece of equipment?
Yeah.
Now, a hole in the wall, that's one thing. It wasn't there on Friday. It's there now on Saturday. I mean, that's pretty obvious.
Yeah, you know, and I'm not wanting to charge for normal wear and tear stuff like that, but the toilet incident I keep bringing up is I wasn't a normal wear and tear. That was a plug because something was flushed. And that's pretty easy to prove. I mean, and it's a deposit. We could have them discussions then. You know, and I get how some people might say, well, it's a discussion. You don't have anything in black or blue. And like I'm saying, this is all under discussion items. This is just things we've talked about that I would like to see changed, but of course we're a nine person board. So ultimately it's up to all of us. So Billy?
Well, rather than charging a deposit, I would just be firm on your rental usage and then they don't get anything back and that goes into a separate account or whatever. And if there's any accidents or anything that occurs, so that way you're not fighting that person. Well, you can't prove we did it. You charge two hundred, two hundred and fifty bucks for a gym for a day at a tournament, the pool or whatever. You non refundable. I mean, and then that money goes hopefully most of the time, nine times out of ten, you won't have any incidents, but the time you do, you got four or five times where you have rental fees that you could use to fix that. So like, like Brad, I could see where Brad's saying. We already paid taxpayer dollars and you're wanting to do this. Well, you guys are having a tournament. You're bringing all that income into your volleyball tournament, your swim tournament. What's two hundred bucks? Two hundred and fifty bucks. I mean.
Um, so one of the other things I was curious, we don't charge upfront every time, do we? I mean, I'm sure some groups probably give money upfront and maybe all of them do, but would it be worth it to have that in writing?
I've been here almost six years. I've never charged a rental fee. The only thing that has gotten charged, um, the Christmas cantata, they have asked, they don't wanna clean. So they're like, we'll pay for custodians because they're older people running it and, and they pay, we calculate, it takes a couple hours to clean it. They cut us a check. Um, and then I think volleyball wanted custodian, custodian, and it is in there, staff hours to open and close, and we, we don't charge that. We don't allot, we don't charge Sally for her time in the auditorium.
So I guess, I mean, is it worth something that we start making sure we do charge every time and get money upfront? And would that have to be worded as in the policy?
I think it's also important to understand that that is additional wear and tear that we're putting on our facilities. That we wouldn't absolutely have to. I think we've been very generous in how much our facilities are used by the community. So I don't think it's out of um, out of reason or or an outrageous thing to say that um, we want to at least pay for the, be able to pay for the cleaning of, of the facility use, especially not, not like, like Teresa said, not for you know, our little groups that have their practices and stuff, but for tournaments where they're charging money, they're making money. I think it's totally fair.
Okay. Adam, sorry.
I, I totally agree. A year ago I would've said, yeah, I'm a taxpayer. From this side looking in, this isn't a rec center. We're the Weston County School District. Um, we got the honor camp comes and trains people. Stuff gets tore up. We, we pay to fix it. Um, we host Upton's regional basketball tournament because they don't have enough gyms. That's wear and tear. That's not even our students. Um, I think if it's a Newcastle basketball game, of course you don't charge. If it's a whatever volleyball tournament that has nothing to do with the school district. Like Billy said, you don't just make it non refundable, charge it, whatever your fee is, two hundred bucks, three hundred bucks a gym, however you break it up, goes into account. Nine times out of ten, nothing gets tore up. So that, once a year, twice a year, something gets tore up. There's some money there to fix it. When you get enough, that pays for your gym floor next time. Um, to get redone because they're wear and tear on carpets, there's wear and tear on gym floors, the concessions that they're using. We pay for all that equipment. We pay for that floor to get redone. Um, it's wear and tear on it all. The toilets are yeah, I mean, but you can't tell me 10,000 people walking across the carpet extra isn't tearing up the carpet.
Mm hmm.
And we pay for it all out of the district. Um,
I don't think it's any different than we charge patrons to use the weight room and the pool. Even though it's, those are taxpayer buildings. Yeah, right. I know, but I'm just, it's kind of the same thing. It's the public wanting to use, utilize our facilities.
But truly, I think Adam hit on the key word. We passed a bond issue for that pool on the premise it was a rec center. For those that may have forgot, that was, that was paid for by a mill levy by the tax people. And so it was different than everything else. And, and truly, we don't have to take on a regional event of any kind. Um, we choose to do that because a lot of times local businesses do profit from teams coming, whether they stay, whether they eat, whether they get gas, whatever they do. I'm just telling you, in thirty two years, this is not as simple as it appears on the surface. Um, there's a lot of what ifs and there's a lot of diff, different conversations. So, yeah, whatever the board wants, I think you have to be very clear in that policy and in the application. So when they pay it right upfront, they know it's not coming back. It is going into a account that is earmarked for construction maintenance. Period. Um, and then the other thing is, is you know, a lot of those big, 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 big venues that also aren't always sporting events. So some of the big, big events that we still host are things like funerals. We've had churches here periodically. Um, there's been a wide range of usage and it is seven days a week. Um, so I think whatever you wanna do, just make sure that, that that's conveyed in writing. Um, but I do think you'll have some people that will eventually wanna make a stink that they've already paid for it. Cause I, I hear it a lot. I don't agree with them because I don't get to go to the county and I don't get to go grab a tractor because I paid for it.
Mm hmm.
But apparently that's a different argument for a different day.
Can I? So the policy does state that. I think we're, we've just not ever enforced it.
Okay. All you had. Paul, you had something.
Just on a small sidebar, if taxpayers complain about that, they should go to Nebraska and go to a football game. Cause they charge you by the head or by the carload when you go through the gate, and a bottle of water this big is three dollars. And that's how they pay for all their stuff. It's, I mean, they're gonna get you coming or going either way, so I think we're still sitting pretty good as far as what we're trying to do and trying to charge.
So this, yeah. So maybe we just need to start enforcing the lease of district property paperwork a little bit harder. So, and we could discuss that a little bit further.
I think the key is to have the transparency and fairness.
Yeah, especially to you guys. I mean, we talked about this, cause I would like to see this little pushed a little bit harder. So if you do start getting questions, I mean, we're we're not changing any policy, we're not changing any of that, this is already in, we just don't enforce it. Or push it very hard. And I think we oughta start pushing it. So, just so everybody's aware. Um. Other than that, does anybody else have any other discussion on that? Alright, that's all I've got. We'll call this meeting adjourned for Eastern Western County Rec Board.
And um, we're gonna take a five-minute break before we resume our regular board meeting and Yeah. We're gonna take a break and then we'll go into executive session. Alright, welcome back, ladies and gentlemen. Um, we have one item left for this evening, and that's an executive session under Warming Statute sixteen dash four dash four oh five I X to discuss board evaluations and goals. May I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
It's been moved and seconded to enter executive session. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carried.